Please be seated.
Counselors, ladies and gentlemen, in the unlikely event of the fire alarm being activated, please exit the town hall with the nearest exit for the safety purpose to the exchange blocks of the rear building. Please show over mother and son.
Chief Executive.
Good evening, Lord Mayor, good evening, counsel. I advise members that apologies for absence have been received from councillors Mary Aspinall, Nick Crofts, Ruth Hirschfield, Lily Henigan, Bill Jones, Janet Kent and Pauline Walton. Are there any other further apologies, please?
Can I remind those present that this is a meeting held in public and not a public meeting? I would also like to emphasise, this is a key public meeting and can I therefore request that everyone present from the public shoot this meeting accordingly, which will enable the business to be dealt with efficiently. The use of social media and filming for reporting proceedings is permitted during council meetings. This does not extend to the filming of members of the public and anyone wishing to film the proceedings, but also particularly directly to the very sensitive issue of filming children without the express permission of their parents. Today is Remembrance Day, so can I ask members, please stand while we observe two minutes silence. Thank you, please be seated. Can I advise members of the recent marriage of councillor Liam Robinson and to extend to him and his wife on behalf of the council, best wishes to the future? And also the engagement of councillor Emily Spurlock and to extend to him and her partner on behalf of the council, it's a congratulation. Chief Executive.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Declarations of interest. Can I remind members that you are only required to declare meetings any discloseable pecuniary or prejudicial interests, in which case the member will need to leave the chamber during the consideration of this item. Are there any such declarations, please?
With regard to item 12, I'm both a member of a trade union, I also work for TUC, so I'll leave the chamber then.
Are the minutes of the City Council meeting held on the 16th of December 2015 agreed? Councillor Bradford?
Can I say, I do this for two reasons. Firstly, it should be matter of public record, but secondly, I'm not sure if I'm the only opposition member who's actually fed up with mayoral announcements being a way to attack opposition members, their motives, what they've done, and then have no right to reply or right to ask questions. I would like to move on the minutes after the words the free man Mayor Anderson explained to the council the background of his recent employment at tribunal and the application of the city council. No opposition members were allowed to ask questions because that factually took place and I find it very strange whilst we were attacked for what we may or may not have done or what we may or may not have written to somebody who claims to have made the decision, we were not allowed to ask questions. I think it's very strange that whilst our motives and our record can be challenged during mayoral announcements, we have no right to respond and no right to ask even any questions. So I move that minute for those two reasons.
Lord Mayor, may I comment on that? Councillor Bradford was put up to raises with me just before the start of the meeting. For the benefit of people in the gallery you are not here last time as well as clarifications to members, the constitution doesn't require answers or questions and answers to the part of this, this part of the agenda. So in relation to the issue that councillor Bradford's referring to, Mayor Anderson made several statements there, doctor, in the minutes. My recollection, Lord Mayor, is that you cut short the questioning because of the personal nature of the first aspect of the questions and the reports of that particular meeting. So for those two reasons that the record of the meeting is the record that is presented in this, it is a matter I suggest, Lord Mayor, for you to come forward and clarify as to whether the motion of the side councillor for this court is accepted or not.
Can I just say that it wasn't the mayor who asked, not answered the questions. How is the chairman of this council as the lord mayor, in line with other lord mayors, along with the constitution said that that was not for discussion on that particular meeting, therefore the meetings are correct and I'd ask the chamber to endorse the minutes as printed. Is that agreed? Is it seconded?
Sorry, Lord Mayor, may I ask councillor Bradford just to read out the terms of the amendment in terms of council to consider a vote on?
After that line, no questions were allowed concerning the application of the casey council and demity is a factual statement. I don't agree that it was just the chairman, the mayor's announcement, I thought the lord mayor was made that response after the mayor said he wouldn't take questions, but that is not relevant.
Can we just, just the amendment, that's all now. All those in favour of the amendment? All those against? Is there any abstentions? For the amendment six, against seventy, one abstention, therefore the amendment is lost. Can we agree the minutes as printed? Thank you.
Lord Mayor, can we move on to question time and statements, please? Can I advise the council that we've received two statements for the proceedings meeting? First statements to be received from Glenn Flotcher from Calder Kids in relation to item ten on the agenda.
Could I invite Glenn to address the council, please?
Good evening, Lord Mayor, Mayor Anderson, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I am Glenn Flotcher, voluntary chairperson of the management committee for Calder Kids Adventure Playground and I'm also a parent of a disabled child that has attended Calder Kids for six years. Many of you will be familiar with our service provision for disabled children, but for those of you who are not, Calder Kids is the only citywide locked gate provision for disabled children from the age of sixteen to nineteen, providing after school outreach, term time play and leisure service and also a play skill provision during the school holidays. Our experienced and caring staff managed by Donna Trotman provide a safe, secure, tranquil, educational and full environment for our disabled children and young people to play, learn and flourish. Calder Kids not only provides this service for disabled children and young people, but it also works in partnership with siblings, parents and carers and other agencies. To many of our disabled families Calder Kids is their lifeline. Calder Kids management owns the building in Hart Hill Road but leases the land from Liverpool City Council. Calder Kids has occupied this location on Hart Hill Estate for thirty seven years. Through those years, we have provided a service to thousands of young disabled children and young people funded through Liverpool City Council, accessing many parks of fundraising and welcome donations from the public and local businesses and the National Law of Clodry and other funding streams. Although Calder Kids is located close to Calderstones Park, we are not accessed via the park and we have a separate pivot on Hart Hill Road as part of the Hart Hill Estate. The general public do not have access to our facility. We are completely fenced in around the perimeter of our site and we have security lighting, CCTV and lock gates. Our current building is not fit for purpose, it's old and in need of repair and as are some of our outdoor play structures. To maintain the same would cost us considerable amounts of money and as we are like many voluntary organisations and charities, we rely on ransom donations for our income at present. Our relocation will enable Calder Kids to develop and maximise our provision with a suitable building and outdoor land to expand our work. We will continue with our present provision, but the relocation will enable us to develop our sensory integrated work, training and therapies and develop a transition unit to support young people who are preparing for their journey into adult and adult services. Our relocation will go hand in hand with the development of our social enterprise that will be a trading arm of our charity. We will tender for work such as sensory equipment storage for higher training and therapies, transition work and independent living, providing training and a meeting place for other disability and community groups, providing spaces for all for repairing care groups to meet and offer schools and other organisations the opportunity to make use of our new facility and provision. We will reach out to so many more disabled children and young people and their families, complement our partners and positively fill some gaps in present provision. As we have a lay of majority in Liverpool, we are confident that our present council will continue to support a positive future for our disabled children and young people in Liverpool in contradiction to the national government and other previous local political parties who have been minimal in their support to disabled children locally at Calder Kids. With the proposed housing development on the land that we currently occupy on the Hart Hill State, Hart Hill Road on the outside of Calderstones Park, we are positive that together with beachy ride and stay as we can continue to provide our unique service for disabled children and young people in Liverpool. We are grateful that Mayor Anderson and Liverpool City Council have faith in our work and are continuing to support us in our development by offering us the opportunity to develop a very sound business plan and continue to support our relocation planning advice and capital receipts. Thank you for this opportunity to address Liverpool City Council.
Mayor Anderson, would you like to respond?
Just briefly, Lord Mayor, we've been making this in motion that I put before the council. I've visited the facility twice. Glenn is absolutely right that it's dilapidated, it's not fit for purpose and it's a disgrace that we've still got that type of facility offering support for some of the vulnerable children in the city. I'd just like to thank and put on record our support as a council to Glenn and all of the volunteers that work at the facility. You have a fantastic job.
Chief Executive.
Second statement to be received from Chief Angus in relation to item thirteen on the agenda.
Could I invite Chief Angus to address the council, please?
Most worshipful, Lord Mayor, councillor Tony Conception, distinguished members, ladies and gentlemen, I'm delighted to be given the opportunity to make this short presentation about the recently formed Liverpool Commonwealth Association. My name is Angus Jacobmeckern. As you will appreciate, the Commonwealth is such a unique union of countries and who are different in so many ways, but work together to promote social, economic and cultural cooperation between its thirty three member states. The city of Liverpool has had a long historical link with some member nations of the Commonwealth and of course as a global city and the citizens of this Commonwealth diaspora communities, in particular people from the Africa Caribbean and Asian heritage who have made great contributions to our cities' developments, its culture, prestige and wealth. They also continue to maintain social links with their countries of origin. Some time ago, a group of people from these Commonwealth diaspora communities came together to establish a Commonwealth Association in the city with support from the Commonwealth local government for women, Liverpool UKTI, Liverpool University. They formed a steering committee and consulted with diaspora community groups in the city region, Commonwealth High Commissioners and all the Commonwealth bodies for their support thanks to councillor Richard Ken who offered the support to convene the meetings of the steering group. Now, there are three main aims to establish and many more, I've got much time. I think number one is to ensure that strong contact between diaspora communities are made and continues to be made. Two is to develop contacts and links between diaspora communities and the city region and countries of origin for development opportunities in trade and investment, cultural exchange, education and health, enhancing the role of the Commonwealth in the Liverpool city region. Now, the proposal to form the association was greeted with overwhelming consensus by diaspora community because of the relevance in reinvigorating and strengthening the cultural links that already exist between diaspora communities as well as enhancing the role of the Commonwealth in the city region. Now, other benefits include enhancing trade and business links and attracting inward investment into the city and as I said before, a city is now a state global city with the international business festival, international celebrity museum and a world city of culture, now enhancing knowledge economy and attracting overseas students to our city through the support of universities and promoting mutually beneficial cultural initiatives between our city and Commonwealth countries. Also enhancing the relationship between health agencies, in particular the School of Tropical Medicine as we appreciate, as well as they have had contacts with the Commonwealth countries and forming the association will enhance that contact and partnership, of course it will also provide research and trade opportunities. So it's very clear that establishing the association with the city will open up the door for opportunities for networking, partnership in all the areas that I've mentioned, there are many more areas, the issues about young people, issues about women and Commonwealth, about 2.2 billion people in the Commonwealth and about sixty percent of them are young people under the age of thirty. So that is a great opportunity there to work with young people and connect with them as well as women. So it is important that we're being to our city to support it and at this stage I will thank the Liverpool City Mayor, Mayor Anderson for his support so far and our new chair, Gary Miller, I'm the vice chair, and councillor Natalie. So we've got a broad support from all sectors, non partition, non political, and I'm delighted to ask you to support it. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to talk to you and I hope you will support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Angus. Could I ask Mayor Anderson, would you like to respond?
Just briefly to say that thank you to all those involved with this, councillor Kemp, councillor Miller, councillor Grobby and councillor Nicholson and others that are engaged in this and also to the communities here in Liverpool. It's often overlooked just how strong the Commonwealth United is and I think often we go out and we try to form relationships with America, North America, China for instance, we overlook the strong bond and strong relationship that we have with the Commonwealth. So it's absolutely right that we address that and look to not only form stronger trade and business relationship but cultural relationships too. So I look forward to offering you support on the motion before us, but equally to develop those relationships and working to form a stronger partnership with Liverpool and the rest of the Commonwealth.
Lord Mayor, a request has also been made by Bob Hennessy of JETUP to address the council in respect of item twelve, the trade union bill. That will technically require a variation to the council's standard orders. Is it your wish that we make that?
Agreed. Agreed? Could I invite Bob down to address the council, please?
Thank you, thank you, Lord Mayor, to mayors and mayors, and councillors as well. I'd like to start on behalf of JETUP by thanking councillors Hanson and Tom for bringing to your attention tonight a very important issue that is being raised on the agenda. It's for good reason that organisations such as Liberty and Amnesty International have spoken out in opposition to the trade union bill and we're here tonight to echo those concerns. Trade union members are hardworking people, they provide public services in this country and our members need our MPs to focus on the real problems that the country faces. We don't need our MPs waging the relevant battles against trade unions. I particularly though like to bring to your attention a number of concerns in particular that we have over this bill. Trade unions improve the UK for everyone. Trade unions are a fundamental part of UK society and we have had a positive impact on all citizens through achievements such as the national minimum wage, improvements in health and safety conditions, improvements in equality legislation and so much more. We believe that MPs, sorry, we believe that MPs should come and talk to us about how we can work together for a better future, but at the moment we are not getting that from this government. The trade union bill has some particularly pernicious elements to legislation, in particular the use of agency workers during strikes. This policy undermines the right to strike and could make public services unsafe. It's highly unlikely that agency workers that used to break the strike will have the same safety and quality training that's currently held by workers who may take strike action in the future. The bill also undermines the right to peaceful protest and it could result in asphos for people on picket lines. It needs to be understood that when trade union members take strike action, we already comply with the detailed code of practice, but this bill will allow the police to issue asphos to people on picket lines and it is quite simply wrong. Peaceful protest is an important part of an open and democratic society and there should be no place for a law that makes criminals of people who are making their voices heard. The bill will also impact on core union activities through restrictions to facility time and the removal of check off. The bill will restrict a trade union's ability to campaign on social justice issues by attacking our political funds, making it so much harder for us to engage in national and local campaigns, be it hospital closures or fighting for pay for public service workers. And importantly, the bill undermines the right to strike because the bill will subject trade union members to unprecedented levels of civil and criminal penalties, regulations and other requirements that will effectively end the right to strike. Council, the option to go on strike is an important democratic right because although it is only ever used as a last resort, it provides working people with another opportunity to put pressure on their employers to solve disagreements. We have got a really good tradition in Liverpool of working with your officers in the council to good effect in partnership working. For that reason, the only industrial action that's taken place in this city in the last five years is national action over pay. We have a good relationship with the employer and we want to maintain that and this bill is absolutely unnecessary, not just in Liverpool but throughout the UK. So I'd like to end by saying this, we believe as trade unionists that it's time for the government to get its priorities straight. This bill is an attack on the very people who could be part of the solution to the country's problems. The trade union bill is unfair, unnecessary and undemocratic and MPs need to focus on the real issues that the country faces and talk to us as trade unionists about how we can work together for a better future for everyone in this country. And I'd like to end by this, by inviting all of you to the public meeting in Liverpool on Friday in the Line Hotel at six thirty. Let's stand together and join our voice. Let's stand together and join our voices in opposing this Trade Union Bill. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Mayor Anderson, would you like to respond?
Just briefly, Lord Mayor, I think Bob summed that up quite eloquently and quite passionately and said exactly what the Trade Union Bill is. It's a police charter to try and stop and stifle democratic rights. When I was elected as leader of this council six years ago, one of the first things I said was that we will protect and defend our trade unions within this city and I urged all the workforce within the city to join the trade union. I repeat that message today. Now more than ever, we need to be part of the trade union. As a proud member of Unison, I urge you all to join the trade union in this city. What I will say to Bob and to all the trade unions represented here tonight, this council will continue to work with you to defend your rights. We are proud of our record together that we've been able to overcome some of the most vicious attacks and cuts the city has ever faced. We would not have got to the stage where we are today without the cooperation and without the friendship and partnership of our trade unions. And it's absolutely right that when Bob mentioned the only day of action is a national day of action and tribute to our trade unions, they agreed with me that the money that was saved as a result of that day of action went in to support the most poorest and neediest in this city and gave that money to food banks and other people. I will pledge here publicly that we will defend your rights as much as we can, including defend the right to have check-off within this council and including the right to defend facility time for trade union elected representatives within this council. Together, we will continue to work to support one another.
Urging key executive decisions, Mayor Anderson.
Lord Mayor, can I submit the reports on pages seventeen and eighteen of the council and just ask for the council to accept that agreement?
Are there any questions? Can we not report? Announcements and updates, Mayor Anderson?
Lord Mayor, just to say an update really on devolution and the negotiations that have been taking place with city region leaders. There will be a special meeting of the council on the nineteenth. It is my intention to try and meet with leaders prior to that to discuss and present to them exactly what has been negotiated between the city region leaders and government. Make no mistake, however, I just simply like to point out that it is not a deal that I would prefer to have made and would prefer to have made a deal with the Labour Government, but we are where we are and if we don't accept the deal we'll be in a very, very, very difficult position. But we will make the deal clear to council leaders and to councillors and believe diaries some people can't make, but I will try to facilitate one-to-ones with leaders and with their group members as best we can. But there will be a special council meeting on the nineteenth and also, as I said, prior to that, there will be presentations. It will be for this council to decide, as it will be for councils in other districts across the city region to decide whether we accept the devolution package on the nineteenth.
Councillor Crowe? Thank you, Lord Mayor. Can I just ask you a question since this came into the agenda after... This announcement was made after the deadline for questions and just a quick question about this. Just wondered, obviously the decision seems to be getting made that the devolution deal will be agreed for the city region. Can the Chief Executive confirm what the effect will be on the position of Mayor of Liverpool and also if that's going to affect whether there are elections next year?
The name, the title of this is the mayor's opportunity to update. I'm not allowing the Chief Executive to answer that question. I will answer it. Providing this is agreed with the city region, then we will discuss that with this council as the sovereign body that governs the city. So any decisions on what happens in the future or whatever regarding this city, regarding this city council will be taken by everybody with discussions and with debates made available for people to have their inputs and their say. It's a bit presumptuous of me or the Chief Executive to start predicting what might or what might not happen prior to a debate taking place and a vote taking place by the sovereign authorities of the district councils. I don't think there's any more to say in that. You know, I appreciate the fact that it's only come to you in short notice, but that's the reality of the devo deal that we've been having with government. It's not been the way I would have liked it to have been done. I'd like it to have happened in another three months and certainly we'd have liked more things to be debated and discussed. However, we are where we are. And I don't think, as I said, neither I, the Chief Executive, nor anybody can commit to any other arrangements until at least until we see what those other authorities are doing.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, for the qualification. Can we move on item six, changes in committee memberships and appointments for our judges? Councillor Dean.
The changes have been set by the two old members and can I ask members to approve them?
Is that agreed? Item seven, constitutional issues, Councillor Dean.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In the past couple of months, there's been some confusion amongst members about what happens to motions that aren't selected for debate. Constitutional issues considered at the city's last meeting and determined that those motions that aren't agreed for debate today will automatically go to the next relevant selectivity or appropriate committee following that city council meeting with the proviso that the member who moved the motion can withdraw if they so choose. Members, we've got a copy of formal word and I ask members to approve it.
Is that agreed? Can we move on? Item eight, Councillor Christine Banks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Every three years, the gambling and licensing information asks all local parties to do a consultation. It's an annual thing. We did ours in the past twelve weeks. And other select committees did a consultation. Councillor Calasone, in terms of the council's small, returned to asking the committee for the support on the dangers of big stocks, betting tables. These are gambling machines that are in betting shops. These machines that are in these betting shops cause massive problems to the people that live in our communities, young people, people become addicted to them. You can actually book your card in it and within a minute it loses a hundred pounds. I've asked a mother come to me and tell me that a son one weekend lost about a hundred pounds in these machines. Another young man that I know of lost that much money. He had gambling debts with lunch shops and he tried to get his money back out of these machines and got that beyond. So Councillor Calasone came to the committee and asked us to endorse and promote the recommendation and the recommendation that the current way of having a seat twelve went through the gambling machine, that draft statement of the principles two thousand and eighteen, which was set out in pages twenty to sixty-four. You need to actually move on this. Councillor Brennan and myself have been working on this for the past three years and we have been approached by other localities two years ago. Chester and Westchester was the then Chair of Licensing Council and asked us to write to the Chair of the LGI, which was sent down to Westminster, of the problems that we are having. And it's not just a few days. So I'm asking this council to move the recommendation of the licensing gambling committee, which was all right, we're trying to take the vote. And if you need any more information, email me.
Is that agreed? Item nine, the appointments on designation of the Director of Public Health, Mayor Anderson.
Lord Mayor, can I move that Dr Sandra Davies be appointed as books as Director of Public Health on a permanent basis with immediate effect?
Is that agreed? We are now moving on to motions and can I remind members that in terms of the timing of speeches, the movement of the motion gets five minutes and has the right of reply of five minutes. All other speakers have three minutes and two minutes for an extension if agreed by the council. Item ten, can I invite Mayor Anderson to remove the motion standing in his name?
Happy to move that motion in my name, Lord Mayor.
First amendment, Councillor Richard Kemp.
I talk to the amendments, just make my contribution and then reserve my rights at the end of the debate. When we became the administration, we faced some hugely difficult financial challenges as people in this chamber know, including the removal of £350 million in building schools for the future and also £127 million in housing market renewal funding. And you may well ask the question around what's that got to do with Harthill Road and the motion that we have before us. But simply, Lord Mayor, I raise that back because the same politics that was played around what we chose to do with our schools and how we would fund them is being played out again today with the amendments that are being moved. The fact of the matter is, I remember one of the Liberal Democrat councillors, she now left the council, talking to us about the new hay site in Allerton. And she said that using that site to build houses on, which was an old school site, was actually selling off green space. Now, of course, the site was ring fenced, the site was fenced off and the public couldn't use it. And we had a dilemma because we needed some of our schools to be rebuilt because the coalition government, including here party, had withdrawn the £350 million building schools for the future programme. So what I promised and what I pledged to the schools community within this city is that we would try and endeavour to do as much as we can to build those schools. So what we did is we made sure that when there was a deadlocked school site and where we were building a replacement school for them, that that site was sold and the money that came from that site was ring fenced into the fund that was building the new schools. And I was up at two primary schools in Wayneletree over the last week, one in Kensington and one in Wayneletree today. And that's Northway Primary, I was there today and also New Park, I think on Monday. And two amazing primary schools with the head teacher and the pupils delighted because of the investments that we've made. And of course, we know that we've delivered on eleven secondary schools, including two...